We will call the meeting to order. The first item of business is going to be establishment of rules of decorum for participation in public hearings at the planning board in the town of Lysander. And I have asked our attorney, Mr. Tim Fraschetti, to read the motion and the rules into the record.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're going to set the rules of decorum for tonight's conduct of the public hearing. It is resolved that in an effort to help the town of Lysander Planning Board conduct an efficient, productive meeting, the planning board on tonight's day adopts the following rules. Policy of rules and decorum at the public meeting. Number one, any individual who desires to speak at a public hearing shall sign in on the sign-in sheet provided at the meeting. Only those signed in shall be allowed to speak. Speakers shall be allowed in three to five minutes to present their comments, the time being kept by the chairman or his or her designated. Speakers may supplement their oral comments with written comments before the speaker, before the public hearing is closed. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the planning board. The purpose of the public hearing is to gather information from the public, not to answer questions or address comments from the public on the night of the public hearing. The chairman of the planning board, at his discretion, may determine if a speaker's question or comment can be readily addressed by the applicant at the public hearing. Speakers shall state his or her name and address and limit their comments to the subject of the public hearing, which tonight would be the site plan. Speakers shall be limited to one opportunity to present their comments during the public hearing. This has been a carried over public hearing for two, from April and June, from May and June. It's my understanding that we will all be listening to people who have not commented at the public hearing tonight. At the end of listening to those who have not commented, then the chairman will make a decision as to whether or not, if there's anybody else who wants to speak who has spoken in the past, we'll be giving that opportunity. Speakers may not address the board until recognized by the chairman. Discussion between speakers and attendees of the public meeting or hearing is prohibited. Members of the audience shall courteously listen and not interrupt a speaker while the public hearing is being conducted. Speakers should present their remarks in a courteous manner. A person who disregards the directive of the chairman enforcing the rules, a person who disregards the directives of the chairman enforcing these rules disturbs the peace at the meeting, makes impertinent or slanderous remarks, or generally conducts himself in a boisterous or inappropriate manner while addressing the planning board could be barred from further participation and forfeit any balance of time remaining for his comments. And if after a final warning the speaker refuses to step down, the planning board chairman may request that law enforcement remove that individual from the meeting room. So those are the rules that will conduct tonight's public hearing. I think we're in a position to make a motion to approve those rules.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. I brought my gavel to me. I want to, I want to make it clear, I think it was clear, but just in case it wasn't, these are rules not just for tonight's public hearing, these are rules for all public hearings now and in the future for the planning board. Before we reconvene the public hearing, I've asked the representative from the applicant to make a presentation to update you people on the changes that have occurred since our last meeting with regard to the proposed site.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Brian Bouchard. I'm with CHA Consulting, project engineer representing the applicant, standing in place for James Trasher, who was here at the previous meetings but wasn't able to make it tonight. This is obviously for the proposed warehouse at the northeast corner of Oswego Road and Henkel Boulevard. And as mentioned, just wanted to provide an update in what has transpired since the last meeting. Previously, we, you all understand that we had proposed a warehouse that totaled over a course of multiple phases, just over 1 million square feet, which would have been phased in three different phases. And based on comments that we received, both at the meeting and discussions internally, the owner has made the decision to significantly reduce the scale and scope of the project. The project will now be what's shown on the map here, which is a single phase. It'll be a single project with just 360,000 square feet, and his intention is to accommodate the future expansion elsewhere within other properties that he owns within the county. So with this, we have submitted the revised site plan to the town. We've also updated the traffic study, which the traffic study was originally designed to document the full traffic impacts of all three phases and not just the first phase. So we do intend to submit a fully updated application set for the board. That would include all of the site plan documents, not just the site plan, as well as the stormwater report and that traffic study. What this is going to do is significantly reduce the impacts associated with this development that we've discussed over the past couple of months. Specifically, it will still be compliant within the industrial district regulations, but it will also further reduce the bulk regulations. The lot coverage will be significantly reduced, the parking areas will be reduced in terms of the earthwork that's needed to perform the development. You have much less impervious surfaces that are needed for stormwater management. Obviously, it comes with less noise and less traffic impacts in terms of the number of cars and vehicles and trucks that'll be coming to and from the site. With respect specifically to traffic, because this was one of the concerns, as I mentioned, we did update the traffic study, and we did submit that to the Onondaga County DOT, as well as the New York State DOT. Onondaga County DOT controls the Henkel Boulevard right-of-way for access, and New York State DOT controls the Oswego Road points of access, and we have received an approval letter from the Onondaga County DOT with respect to Henkel Boulevard. There is a restriction on the Henkel Boulevard right-of-way, where there will be no vehicular access permitted on Henkel Boulevard. We are still working with the county DOT, though, to still allow for an emergency access point that would be a locked and gated access point specific for emergency vehicles and more specifically for fire access, to still provide two ways to enter and exit the site should there be an emergency. But the only driveway for the site for vehicles and trucks and passenger cars entering would be on Oswego Road, which we've shown in the previous plans as well. We are still awaiting a response from the DOT, so we haven't gotten their response. But this singular phased project is very similar to what was contemplated in the Phase One, which did not require any mitigation measures. So the traffic study does document that there is no mitigation measures that would otherwise have been required for the future build-out of multiple phases, which we've talked about in being, you know, necessary signal timing changes and roadway expansions to accommodate those turn lanes. So none of that mitigation or impact will be required for this project, but we are still waiting for the response from the DOT with respect to that. So with that, you know, just the summary is that we've taken this project and consolidated down into that single phase. It will be only 360,000 square feet built at once, which we believe addresses many of the concerns and obviously significantly reduces the impacts associated with what would have been the future build-out of the bigger parcel. And we look forward to getting the rest of the application materials that memorialize this to the, to the town for their review.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
As you can see, a great deal has changed since the last time. I'm still, we're going to open, reopen the public hearing, and you saw the rules, the limits of time. I'm going to put a one-hour limit on the time period for the whole public hearing. I would think when you absorb the information that was just presented to you, you should be able to see that many of the concerns that have been expressed here over the last two months by citizens, clearly the developer was listening to you. And from a planning board standpoint, has gone a long way toward making it less impactful as we analyze it, and at a further point next month, complete our Part Two of the Seeker. So with that, I would ask you, if you wish to speak, you would raise your hand, I will recognize you, and you come to the mic, speak directly to us, give your name and address. All right, we will open the hearing. Sir.
Good evening to the planning board chair. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
And the planning board members. My name is Glenn Silver, and I reside at 2240 Mott Road, Lysander. I am here tonight, of course, to speak on the United Auto Supply application. Since this project, which was the subject of local law number one, has completely changed as of literally the past 24 hours, the point I wish to make is that no one, especially myself, as I'm speaking here right now, has had a chance to review these changes. Members of the public should have been given a chance to review the new proposal and any new studies that this new proposal may require, including new state environmental quality review documents, which I believe are required for a new application. So I am here tonight to simply ask you to hold a new public hearing on this new proposal, whether you are legally required to or not, or at the minimum, keep the current public hearing open until people have been given ample time to review the new proposal. To hold a public hearing on a previous proposal that has been rescinded and a new proposal that no one has had a chance to review with supporting documents that don't apply is otherwise a denial of due process and a waste of everyone's time. I have considerable other comments, but I will hold them until I have had a chance to review the new proposal, which I'm hoping you'll give us time to review and comment on. Thank you for your consideration.
Is there anyone else who would wish to speak? Sir in the red shirt?
Yes.
Could you come up to the mic, please?
Hi, my name is John Farneth. I live on Connel Terrace, lifetime resident.
Did you speak at the last meeting?
Yes, I did. I was interrupted by the man over there, and I was cut off completely. I didn't finish. I was not given a chance to finish.
I'll give you three minutes, Jim.
Okay. Again, everything's changed in the last 24 hours, but I would like to get this in in regards to the diesel truck, the number of diesel trucks that would have to service a 36, 360,000-foot warehouse. Henkel Boulevard is way out in the northwest part of the county, as we know. Let's assume that the square footage, you multiply by the height to get cubic footage, because that's how you calculate how much a diesel truck, 18-wheeler, can hold. Let's, let's just, as an example, take 16 foot is how high their storage is going to be, probably going to be higher. An average 18-wheeler diesel truck will hold 200, 2,500 cubic feet of cargo, freight, auto parts. Okay, so assuming the warehouse is built to fill up, that's the purpose of a warehouse, you're going to get between three, you're going to need between three, at the new proposal, the old proposal was they're going to need 8,000 trucks to fill up that warehouse, and assuming they're going to use a warehouse, that's what it's going to take. But the new proposal is going to take between 3,000 and 4,000 truckloads just to fill it, just to fill it. Now, if you take Amazon, they try to turn their warehouses over like once every two weeks, the most once every month. So we are talking about an almost unlimited number of trucks coming down 690. There's only two accesses to this proposed warehouse. You've got 690, and then you've got 481 down 31 to Henkel Boulevard, excuse me. I'm stating this fact because everyone uses 690. It's a dangerous intersection to begin with. You go to the next one, everybody from 370, the westbound people of this county and Cuba County are merging onto a very dangerous merge. Diesel trucks are accelerating up that half-mile hill, coming down the other side, and there's a very tight merge there, extremely dangerous. There's going to be accidents there the way it's configured. The river limits the merge lane. The next point I wanted to make is how much pollution these diesel trucks are going to cause. A diesel truck, as opposed to a gasoline engine, emits a lot more CO2, and the particulate from a diesel engine, because it's a high-compression engine, is much smaller and it penetrates the brain. It's just common knowledge among pollution people. So you have 3,000 trucks, who get an average, by the way, of only three to five miles per gallon, coming down 690. The whole time they're going to be here in the Baldwinville area, they're going to burn two, three, four gallons, because when they're loading and unloading, which could take hours, they have to run their engines to keep the pressure up, because that's how they levitate their load in, in most cases. So you're talking about, and going back to 22 pounds, each gallon that they burn emits 22 pounds of carbon. You're talking about potentially 100 pounds of carbon emitted just northwest of Beville, Beville High School, Eldon Elementary, every day, thousands of trucks. In order to make that place profitable, you need thousands of trucks moving that type of merchandise. So again, I haven't seen the new traffic study, but those are facts about the diesel engine.
One minute, Jim.
In conclusion, since I only have one minute, the purpose of my thinking on this project is, when I first heard about it, the absurdity of locating a warehouse way out here. Why was Syracuse even settled? Because it's a convenient crossroads of north and south. We're 15, 20 miles way out here. If this guy is going to do e-commerce, you, the airport is up, is, you know, you take 481 to the airport, it's absurd. The location is, it makes no planning sense. That's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment at this time? Rob?
Hold on. I think it's fine, it's fine, I spoke last time. Otherwise, if there's anybody else who wants to speak, we're going to give everybody who wants to speak an opportunity.
Yeah, Rob, you will only speak if you're the last speaker.
Right. Okay, that's, that's fair enough.
Sir, did you raise your hand?
Yes.
Please, come forward.
I live on Connel Terrace also, and I would just like to know, what advantage does the town of Lysander gain from allowing this business to be here? What benefits are the taxpayers going to get? Are we going to get a reduced tax because this business is going to make up the difference? Or are they get all kinds of exemptions, and they're going to be moved in, and our taxes are still going to continue to go up? So what advantage, why does the town want this business? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hello, my name is Paula Zabrowski, and I live on 226 Lamson Road. And one thing to just echo is the fact that this is a new project and that we haven't had a chance to really review it to make our comments most relevant today. But when I moved out to Lysander, I moved out to Lysander to be away from this type of industrial movement. I moved out to be away from the city, and I moved on to an agricultural piece of property in order to enjoy that agricultural piece of property in the middle of a whole bunch of other agricultural pieces of property. And certainly, I drive down Route 48 every single day, I go to work in the city, and I commute with people so that I'm able to decrease my carbon footprint while going to the city, and I commute home every time, I mean, I carpool is what I'm trying to say, every time that I have the opportunity. And I live in a piece that's intermingled with the wildlife refuge so that that development could be minimized around my particular piece of property. And I suppose it was poor planning on my part not to recognize that there was an industrial piece of property on my way in and out of my town that I bought to be agricultural. But then again, maybe it wasn't, because there are a lot of people here, I think, having the same concerns, and I think people arrived in Lysander with that plan, and looking at the map, I would say most of us came to an agricultural town.
Is there anyone else? There being no one else, Rob, I'll give you a couple of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one, something I want to read.
Oh.
From, from a resident who wants me to read that.
Okay.
We can do it after, Rob.
Oh, okay, Rob. All right.
Okay, you know, first of all, I just want to mention that I saw the revised traffic study, and I do appreciate that some of the things that I had said and some of the comments that I made were definitely incorporated and changed as far as updated document. All right, it's my understanding from a conversation yesterday, July 7th, with Planning Board Chairman John Corey, the applicant does not plan to submit a new proposal for the warehouse, rather to revise the existing application. Furthermore, the EAF Part One will not be revised. The EF Part Two will be reviewed early as August, should all the revised and outstanding information requirements be satisfied. I suggest that the applicant withdraw the existing application in its entirety and submit a new proposal for the 3,000, 360,000-square-foot warehouse, given that significant material change in the original plan. This will ensure that all the seeker documents relate to the correct proposal. Furthermore, should the applicant in the future decide to expand the facility to resemble subsequent phases of the original 1 million-square-foot warehouse proposal, this would be prohibited as segmentation. During the April 8th Planning Board meeting whereby the board first reviewed the EF Part Two, Planning Board Attorney Tim Fraschetti.
Fraschetti.
Fraschetti, I'm sorry. I explained the process of the EAF Part Two review. Quote, "When we go through Part Two, it relates back to Part One. Every question that is in Part Two should have an answer in Part One." The existing Part One no longer applies to the newly proposed 360,000-square-foot warehouse. I reviewed the existing EF Part One and found the following items no longer apply to revised project. The list is not, is not intended to be in its entirety, simply my personal review of the documents. The description no longer applies to a 1 million-square-foot warehouse. The acreage to be physically disturbed is not correct. The proposed action is not, is not going to be in multiple phases. The dimensions are not correct. The anticipated water usage demand per day is likely not correct. Total anticipated liquid waste generation per day is likely not correct. Impervious surface is not correct. The traffic study no longer applies, given it's based entirely on a 1 million-square-foot high cube fulfillment center, and the ingress and egress is materially changed. Parking spaces are not correct. The estimated annual electricity demand is likely not correct. Solid waste generation during construction is likely not correct. Land uses are not correct. The EAF mapper no longer applies, given it relates to a 1 million-square-foot warehouse. The EF Part One is signed by James Trasher, who states that he hereby certifies that the information provided is true and to the best of his knowledge. In addition to the traffic study needing to be resubmitted, the wetland delineation study should also be revised to align with the new proposal. Other documents such as photometric studies need to be reviewed or withdrawn and resubmitted. The planning board needs to take a hard look at every aspect of the documents received, whether they are true and correct. When finalizing the Part Two, the planning board will need to explain why each impact may or will not be significant. Given the significant change in the scope of this project, I propose that the applicant withdraw the revised application, start the process over again with a new seeker as this, as a new project. Thank you.
Jim?
Yes.
You, you have a document.
Yes, I do. I have something that was submitted by Wayne Weiss, 834 Smokey Hollow Road, to all interested persons. The proposed construction of a warehouse at the intersection of Henkel Boulevard and Route 48 creates a severe problem for residents north of the site that rely on groundwater wells for a water supply. This is a major supply of water available to all the residents north of the construction site. The problem is simply explained when we realize the aquifer that supplies the groundwater runs directly onto the proposed construction site. The flow of the groundwater is south to north. The actual aquifer is just under the surface and is limited to under 80 feet, feet of usable, potable water. Since the town of Lysander has decided not to install a pipeline to supply water to the homes north of the village of Baldwinville, this situation leaves all these homes and businesses without a water supply, that the groundwater supply is contaminated or restricted any more than it is at present. A solution could be install a pipeline that supplies water to every resident and business north of the proposed construction site before construction of the warehouse can be started. Otherwise, such, such a construction would be, would be a probable hazard to the drinking water of the tax-paying home and businesses, all in caps, owners and residents, north of the construction site, respectfully, Wayne Weiss.
There being no other people to speak at this time. It was.
Hello. I spoke at the main meeting.
Okay, well, I, I only said that because we had said that you were there. If you'd like to talk, please come up.
Okay. Could I ask this young man to state one thing again so that I make sure that I understand it? Did you say that Mr. Rinaldi will not?
Pardon me? Can we have your name, please?
Richard Latara, 121 Coachman's Web.
And ask us, and then we'll.
Okay. I'm asking you then, okay. Did this young man essentially state that Mr. Rinaldi will not be building beyond this 360,000-square-feet, and that he would be taking his opportunities there to other areas of Onondaga County? Did this young man say that? Is that what I heard?
Answer him.
The current project that has been submitted with the revised site plan, which will be supplemented with more documents with a full site plan, stormwater report, and traffic study, will be for 360,000-square-feet of warehouse.
Is there anything to be built in the future? That's.
No, no. Yeah. Brian?
Well, and I, I would say, as a board member, the concern for segmentation will be taken into account in reviewing this project.
Yeah.
Understood.
Yeah, we, we, the board understands the concept of segmentation, and it will definitely be something that we will be considering as we move forward with a decision on seeker.
And despite. Rob, some of your comments, these people up here, we actually know what we're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Given, Tim, given the comments of the one gentleman about the. Given, Tim, given the comments of the one gentleman about desire to continue the public hearing or to have a new public hearing regarding the new material and the change, it was my intention at this time to close the public hearing. And the reason for that would be that there is nothing that has been submitted or will be submitted in the new documentation that hasn't already been looked at and reviewed within the one you've been looking at. If anything, all areas have been, well, basically, all areas have either been eliminated as a concern, like there's no longer a wetland concern, the footprint no longer touches the 100-year line, traffic is down. All of those things from a Planning Board standpoint say, from a million-square-foot project, if through our process we find that it meets with necessary and appropriate mitigation, all the state, county, and town codes pertaining to this type of application, then, under the new one that is submitted, which is substantially smaller in scale and size and impact, clearly, there wouldn't be a need to start over. And that was, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for the other members of the Board, that would have been my intention. We still have documents to receive, as noted, we don't have all the updated documents. The only thing we know at this time is what we will be getting will be less egregious and impactful than what we've already been studying and working on. So I would welcome any other comments from Board members with regard to this.
There's a resolution on the table to either close the meeting or continue the meeting. I'd like to have a discussion regarding it.
Okay.
We need a resolution to have a discussion, all right?
No, the issue is, I understand it, it was the intention to close the public hearing tonight. As I had said from the May meeting, I think I said it at the April meeting, under state law and under the town code, on a site plan review, there was no requirement at all for a public hearing. We have now held three public hearings over the course of three months. So it is currently at the discretion of the Planning Board to determine whether or not additional public hearings would be necessary to gather the type of information that is necessary to, and the way I've been looking at this public hearing, frankly, is that it is an opportunity for the public to provide us with information, especially as it relates to the seeker analysis. That is really the purpose of the public hearings that have been held, is to provide us with that kind of information. We did do a review of Part 2 in April, and at that time, there was some sense of where the Planning Board wanted to, or thought it wanted to go, but it wanted to get more information even after that meeting, which frankly, there's still some more information that is missing, and that's why a seeker analysis has not been completed at this point. But it's entirely at the discretion of this Board whether or not it wants to hold additional public hearings on a revised plan. I will speak to the issue of Part 1. Clearly, there is information in the existing Part 1 that has to be updated because it's different, okay? So that will be done. And that doesn't mean we need a complete new Part 1, we need it updated to reflect the new site plan. That seems to be a logical and rational and reasonable way to handle that issue. When we look at Part 2, we've already reviewed Part 2. We will, this Planning Board will review Part 2 again, but only to the extent that this project has changed. So issues that we have dealt with, like is this the proper zoning for this project? We won't have to deal with it anymore because it is the proper zoning for this type of project. Or issues about wetlands, as was mentioned, or traffic is still being updated. So those are all kinds of issues that we still need to make decisions on. But whether we want to close the public, whether you want to close the public hearing tonight is completely in your discretion.
Well, I would ask the question, what was the intention holding a public hearing for a project that did not require a public?
The intention was, and I made that decision, was that I felt, pardon me, I got fragged tonight, I guess, I felt that the scope and magnitude of this project was such that it would be important for the public to be made aware of it and have an opportunity to comment on it, even though we were not required to by code or law.
And I would think that was a very good decision. Now, I would ask the question of fellow Board members, do we feel as though the scope and magnitude of this project, as it stands in front of us now, warrants the need for a public hearing?
Well, I'll give you my response. If the project that stands before us now was just submitted and the other project wasn't submitted, I would say yes. But since the other project has been here, which is exactly the same project on a larger scale, and we have discussed it over three months, I would say at this point, no. That's my position.
I guess I would ask the other question. Would we, and we as a Board anticipate this smaller-scale project would raise any public concerns that would be differing from those that were raised on the larger project?
There's none I can think of.
I don't think so. I don't think that, I think issues have been raised, I think many of them have been good, and I can't see how something, and they all have been listened to, and we have now the opportunity to review the project in light of those. I can't envision something different as a result of this project from the larger project. And as I'm talking, I'm trying to both take into consideration myself as to how I would express my concerns to the Board, as well as try to let the public understand the thought process in making that. So I, I do not see a reason to continue a public discussion. It's a different project, it without a doubt has a different impact, but I don't see any issues that would be different than have been raised, and I think we have a good representation of the public. The question was asked, does anyone else have a comment? It appears as though everyone's comments have either been spoken or been represented by someone else. I would assume that. And my thought would be that there is no need to continue a public hearing for this as what we're looking at right now. That's my thought.
Your thoughts are the same as mine. I would say this to the public, if we do close the meeting, we will be having a, obviously, our next meeting on this topic would be in August. You will have time to review the new documentation, and during that time, you can send us letters or emails that might update your thoughts based on the review of the updated documents. But I totally agree with what Steve said, that was basically the logic I was using when I made my decision with regard to, there's not a need for further public hearing on this matter. Any
And that's not to say that I don't think the public should, like you say.
They can still comment in written form.
Can still continue to be participatory in the process.
Every letter, every email that has been sent to us by the citizenry, we have read, we have received, we have read, it's on the record. So if you have any other comments or concerns, you still have the opportunity to present it.
I would encourage anyone that wants to make those comments in writing to do so because this is what happened in the last, oh, 28, 48 hours, 24 hours, whatever timeframe you pick, it's new to us too as far as the changes. So you certainly are encouraged. What Rob said, he obviously did some homework in a very short period of time and raised some very good points about what needs to be changed in the Part 1 of the EAF. I'm glad he gave that to us. I certainly hope I will get a copy of it in the very near future. And I would hope that all of you will take a good look at what is changing. Some of it might not even be done changing as of the August meeting because we're still waiting on the State of New York DOT. We don't know what they're going to say, we don't know what they may ask for in terms of changes to the intersection, to how trucks are going to enter the road, et cetera. We don't know that. And that's been the one thing that is, the reason we've been continuing the hearings is because we're no farther along with that than we were three months ago.
John, you know, our purview as a Planning Board is to, we're holding these public hearings on the site plan also. And we've heard multiple comments on the site plan, but we also heard plenty of comments not referring to the site plan. You know, we have to look at the criteria that meets our, of our rules and regulations for setback height, zoning, you know, all these features, and that's our job as a Planning. So, you know, I feel like, you know, the scope of the project essentially for easy math is reduced by two-thirds. So, you know, I don't see any site plan-related, you know, differences that are going to change any of the comments we've already heard. So I would
I would agree.
Close the hearing.
I would, at this time, make a motion that the public hearing regarding the United Auto Supply Warehouse Project be closed.
Dr.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Public hearing is closed. Thank you all for your input and your time. We will
Do you want to recess for five minutes?
We will take a recess so that the chairman have run for the rest of
You want to tell them we're not going to do anything?
All right, the meeting recess is adjourned or ended, and we will start. Our next item is the approval of minutes from the May 13th and June 10th regular Planning Board meeting. And it's probably, why I can't see because I've read all of those today. Does anyone, I make a motion that we accept the minutes. I gave one correction to Karen with regard to the number of signatures on that petition that Rob presented.
I gave her one minor one, I don't even know if she's seen it yet, but it was very minor.
Yeah, that was a wonderful job, Karen, of capturing a lot of information. I make a motion that we accept with the two noted changes, the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Our next item, there will be no action taken tonight with regard to the warehouse project, obviously. Next item
Mr. Chairman, I do have one, I just want to run something by the Board on that issue. Since we do have a new site plan, and minimal, the environmental impacts and the impacts are going to be significantly less than what was proposed, I do not believe we need to refer back to the county because the county came back today with some comments and some small applications. I just want to make sure the Board is okay with that, and we don't, there's no need to send it back to that county. Would you like to send it to the county with the new application?
How would the timing on that work out, Karen? Would we have time to get it to county and get their comments by our August meeting?
We would.
Huh?
We would.
I think procedurally, we ought, my preference would be to send it to them, just as a courtesy.
So Brian, do you still, I need EAF in the application, so I guess it would
Well, I don't think they need a new EAF. They can just, you can just send them the revised plan.
Just the site plan?
Send them the revised site plan. If they have a question, they can call me.
Yeah, just, that's all I was talking about, was the site plan.
And I suspect there's going to be no
You guys okay with that?
Do you need extra hard copies or do you email it to them?
No, I guess that I don't need it. They accept everything.
Okay. So yeah, if it's just the updated site plan, I think you have that, right?
We do have that.
In regard, you just asked about the EAF. In regard to the EAF, I do think we need a new Part 1 because it is
We need an updated Part 1.
Well, yeah, but it's going to have to be substantially changed because of the changes. So however
It has to be, it has to reflect the new project.
With a new date and, yes.
Well, I don't
Revising.
Yeah, it just has to be revising.
They'll do that. I think that's what Tim is suggesting.
Yeah, go ahead.
Next item is minor subdivision Loop Road development. And who, Brian, let's see, what is it?
All right, you have it up there.
Where is that folder? Oh, there we go.
Do you have, you all have a copy?
They do all have it.
Yep, there we go.
So good evening.
That's
That's gypsum, yeah. It should just be the one-page subdivision plan.
Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. Brian Bouchard
It's not behind your cup, Jack. Turn it on.
Yeah, right here. Yeah, I know.
Brian Bouchard with CHA Consulting, pending on behalf of the applicant. So this is the Loop Road Storage Facility, right down the road, 8245 Loop Road. This is an application for subdivision. As you all know, the storage and the leasing office and the paved driveway have all been installed, and what this application will do is subdivide the existing parcel into three new lots on which the storage complex will be Lot 1. And then each of the two commercial or office buildings will be on their separate lot for the purposes of the new bank financing and to complete those office projects separately. So there's no changes to the plans that were approved with the site plans, this is purely a subdivision to divide the storage units from each one of the office buildings separately.
And this is facilitate your financing?
Correct, yeah, so that the bank financing can be separate for the different buildings.
So there's no impacts on wetlands or anything that we, nothing that we've not already dealt with?
No changes to the site plan, as our understanding at this time, it's simply so he can build one of the buildings and get financing on it that is separate from the financing that he has for the meeting facility.
Correct.
And what's shown in very light is existing?
That's the background of the site plan, so it does include where the office buildings are so that you can orient yourself to the property line, which is between the two office buildings, and then the property line that forms the boundary of the storage units. So it's not fully complete. That is the approved generic line work from the site plan to give you spatial orientation to where those lot lines were created.
Those buildings don't exist?
No, no. You'll check on the way out.
I was going to say, right?
I was there yesterday, they're not there.
We know they're not there.
They build fast now.
Well, I know, but
All right.
But the intent is to develop this property following subdivision in somewhat of a manner that's shown. of a manner that's shown?
Correct. The intent will be to complete the project that was approved. This is purely to divide the properties so that the financing can be disconnected from the new construction compared to what has already been completed.
And as two lots or as three lots, all buildings will be self-sufficient? They'll have water service independent? They have sewer laterals that are independent?
Correct.
Whatever other services are entering those parcels would be individual?
Individual, yep. Exactly.
Wish they were already shown that way on the...
Yes.
Yeah. The site plan, yep. Yep. Okay. I think we'll move forward with this one. We'll... I make the following resolution. Resolved that the planning board, having followed the prescribed SEACER procedures and having received no comments to the contrary, hereby designates itself as lead agency for the Albarisi Excavation and Development, 8245 Loop Road, Baldensville, New York, Minor Subdivision Application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'm the only one in favor.
Aye.
We will do the short form SEACER to follow proper procedure here. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan? No.
Oh, yeah, there would have to be, yeah.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. No CE, A. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, groundwater, et cetera? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Make the following resolution. Resolved that having reviewed the SEACER regulations, determined this is an unlisted action, and having reviewed the short environmental assessment form and finding no significant or adverse impacts resulting from the Albarisi Excavation and Development, 8245 Loop Road, Baldensville, New York, Minor Subdivision Application, the planning board issues a negative declaration. Do I have a second? Second. Discussion?
Jump in.
All in favor? Aye. So move.
Aye.
Resolve that a public hearing be held at a date and time designated by the secretary on the application of Albarisi Excavation and Development for a subdivision of property located at 8245 Loop Road, Baldensville, New York, tax map number 025 dot dash 02 dash 33 dot 0 for a development of three lots from a parcel of approximately 11.44 acres. Do I have a second?
A second.
I do a comment.
Okay.
I was probably late, but Lot Two has no roadway access.
We have crosslot access. It would be required before it's filed.
Yep.
And be included in the deed.
Okay. So that's anticipated?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. Thank you.
Just for my understanding, as I leave shortly, was that to call a public hearing for the next meeting, or was that...
At the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. I believe we'd have time, Karen, wouldn't we?
Time designated by the clerk.
No, no, this does not have to go to county. Okay, that's that one. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Gypsum Express.
Good evening, Brian Bouchard with CHA Consulting, pending on behalf of the applicant. So Gypsum Express, this is 8265 Loop Road, just down the other way. If I'm not mistaken, you did have a discussion with the concept plan, so you're generally familiar with the anticipated application here. This is for, we've submitted the site plan application and SEACER document for a proposed parking lot expansion in the rear of this property. You may understand that there's been some activity, I guess, over the years that has gone on back there, but this is to formalize a new parking lot area that would be behind the existing building for the storage of his vehicles and parking of the trucks, as well as a small two-bay drive-through truck wash bay that will be in the rear of the property and includes access from the existing driveway along with a new access point to Loop Road just to the north so that there's circulation enough for the vehicles to go by. We've included the comments from the engineering office with respect to some utility updates that were requested to show water and sewer from that truck wash bay. And we've also provided previously the stormwater management plan and report for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management, along with the site plan drawings for the new impervious surface that would be created for this parking area.
When they wash off the trucks, where does that water go?
So the water would go to a trench drain that's in the building itself and would pass through presumably an oil-water separator, which is a plumbing control requirement, and go to a sewer lateral that is shown on the updated drawing that Al had requested, and go to the town sewer main.
So you're good with that?
So the one thing that's missing here is we have not received a letter from the ESC. There was confusion as to wetland delineation and the site plan that they were sent to review. They did not receive a sufficient condition plan, which showed and called out the wetland boundary points and the wetland delineation line. That line did transfer onto the site plan, however, it was not labeled or called out. And she was unsure of where the actual wetlands' boundary was. So I sent her this evening the entire site plan package with the existing conditions plan, the wetland boundary, the wetland points, callouts. So we have not received a letter from her, but that was her only concern that she referenced in her email. So I don't anticipate her being opposed, put an upward decision being opposed to the project as presented. We just have not received the letter yet.
So should we vote approval subject to, or...
That would be...
We will. We have to just check one thing about...
We just want to see how far this is from...
While you're doing that, I'll read into the record the letter we received from the town Lysander engineer.
Yeah, it's over, are you looking 500 feet? It's over 500?
Yes. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the site plan for the proposed Gypsum Express expansion project located at 8265 Loop Road. At this time, the site plan drawings for the final revision date of July 8, 2021, and the swept dated 20, June 2021, appear to meet all applicable local and state code requirements. At this time, I would not be opposed to the planning board passing a resolution of site plan approval for the project. I believe, Karen, we have to do a short form SEACER on this?
No, and we're going to have to read from the prior lead agency.
Oh, we're doing, pass that. Is that sewer lateral shown from, on the drawings from the...
It is on the revised set.
Not on the set you have.
It's a, that set that's right there to your right.
Yeah, it was added, Al had us add it, so it is on that plan. It is not...
I don't know the finished floor elevation. Do you run a profile?
The sewer there is about 13 feet deep.
Yeah, I think it's still...
So we have more than adequate slope at point 004 to get it there.
He's got about nine feet from, from grade to the invert of that sewer.
Yeah.
That's from grade. Right? It looks like you're about 36. I don't know what your finished floor is going to be, but you're 36 here.
Yes, you're 36.
Your invert down here is 27.
I mean, nine feet over, can't be more than 10 inches of the 60 scale, 600 feet. Yeah, it's going to go in up there. You're like...
So it's, yeah, it's, it's 0.6, an eight-inch STR 35, 0.6 percent. So the invert...
Okay, so you got, you got it.
Yeah, invert leaving the building. There is fill within the parking lot. Invert leaving the building, 31.5. Invert at the saddle connection, 27.3.
All right.
It's just not on the plan you have, but it's on those ones.
So which one are we on, Mr. Chairman? We're on Gypsum Express?
We're on Gypsum Express, and we're at the point where we need to do the short...
All right. So somebody wants to make a motion to declare this for the lead agency SEACER.
We have to do that. We haven't done that yet.
Right. It's asking you to do that.
Ah.
I will make a motion that the town planning board be lead agency SEACER application for the Gypsum Express expansion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. You, I think, had to make a same, same intermission I had to make earlier. There you go. All right, we will, we'll do the short form. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land? No. We're just basically putting another building on a footprint that exists, correct?
Uh, no, it's expanding the impervious area. However, that's going to give to the water.
Right. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental character? No. That's CE. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit? No. Small, no. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public and private water supplies? No. Public and private wastewater? Not significantly. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, or architectural, aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increased potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resource or human health? No. So we'd have to issue a negative declaration also?
Yes.
I guess then we would...
We're in the position now to make a motion to recognize and unlist the made action and issue a negative declaration.
All right. Do I need to re, okay. The motion was made for negative declaration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So move. All right.
We're good on the Radisson coverage requirements?
Oh, yeah. Not at all.
And it will, yeah, our approval will be conditioned upon...
Yes. That will be with a one condition. Findings. Review of the short environmental assessment form indicates that there will be no significant or adverse impacts resulting from the project. We will require a letter from Empire State Development stating that they have reviewed the application and it conforms with the rules and regulations in the Radisson PUD. This action is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. This action is consistent with the town's current zoning ordinances. This action did not require referral to the Onondaga County Planning Board for their review and recommendation. This action will cause no adverse effects on the public health, safety, and welfare in the neighborhood or district. Resolve that having reviewed the site plan is defined on a map dated April 5, 2021. Revision dates of June 25, 2021, and July 8, 2021, prepared by CHA licensed professional engineers associated with the application of Gypsum Express, 8625 Loop Road, Baldensville, New York, and part of Radisson PUD to allow the expansion of their facility as well as additional parking and truck wash building. The site plan is hereby approved. Now, do we have to add that one condition, or wasn't that covered up here?
It's in the findings, but you can put it in the resolution.
With the following condition. And what was that again, Karen?
A letter from ESC.
Yep. All right. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So move. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next. Next item. Next item is Timberbanks waived the public hearing and sign the final plat. They're asking for another 22 lots. Must be business is good over there.
But the only thing I will add to this is we should condition this, that town board has not accepted dedication of the roadway and utilities in this. We should say that the chairman authorized the sign of the final plat once town board has passed a resolution taking dedication. And it's purely a matter of they did not have their first meeting in July, and then reported for July holidays, so they're not meeting in July.
Okay. So this is, this is your letter?
Correct.
So you want to add to that?
Dedication to the resolution.
Okay. At this time, I would not be opposed to the board waiving the public hearing and authorizing the chairman to sign the final plat once the town...
Board is entitled to dedication.
Okay. I will read, I'll read the town engineer's letter on this matter. I have completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced major subdivision as prepared by Anuzi Romans Land Surveying PC dated November 3, 2020. The lots included in the final plat as submitted are in compliance with the town of Lysander and Timberbanks PUD general project plan requirements. At this time, I would not be opposed to the board waiving the public hearing and authorizing the chairman to sign the final plat, once the town board has accepted dedication of the roadways and utilities. Make the following motion. Resolved that the planning board authorizes the chairperson to review the final plat for the 22 lot subdivision application of J.L. Barisi and Sons for property located at Timberbanks Section Number 1B, Phase 6, lots 400 through 421, part of Farm Lot Number 88 and part of Tax Map Number 072 dot 1 dot dash 04 dash 17 dot 1. And finding that all modifications and conditions have been met, and that the final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, and that any differences found are not significant, the board authorizes the chairperson to, person, to waive the final plat public hearing and sign the final plat, once the town board has accepted dedication of the roadways and utilities. Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Uh, the next item, again, to waive the public hearing, this is River Point at Radisson, Phase 6, 5 lots. Let's see. I have a letter from the town engineer on this matter. Dear Chairman Corey and Lysander Planning Board members, I have completed my review of the final plat for the above referenced major subdivision as presented by Applied Earth Technologies dated June 16, 2021. The final plat does not reflect any changes to the dimensions of the lots included in Phase 6, when compared to the preliminary plat for the, for the subdivision that was previously approved by the board. This map includes all of the remaining lots in the subdivision. At this time, I would have, I would not be opposed to the board waiving the final public hearing and authorizing the chairman to sign the final plat. Would anyone have any questions? I think everything's there. All right, I make the following motion. Resolved that the planning board authorizes the chairperson to review the final plat for the John Row River Point subdivision application for property located at River Point, Phase 6, lots 5, 6, 11, and 12, Carmella Circle, and Lot 22, Salvatore Way, Baldensville, New York, part of Tax Map Number 082 dot dash 03 dash 2 dot 1. And finding that all modifications and conditions have been met, the board authorizes the chairperson to waive the final plat public hearing and sign the final plat.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, so moved. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good. I was hoping you guys just like it, you wanted to stay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:25, it looks like.